Ready? All right. So we're at-
This conference will now be recorded.
Land O' County Commission meeting, Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners for July 23rd, 2020. Judy, will you go ahead and?
Can I make the pledge?
Make this in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to take a moment of silence. All right, moving on. Land O' County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15:00 PM. Any agenda items may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. So, Commission reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. Well, of course, the big meetings was our national annual conference with NACO that was scheduled to be held in Orange County, Florida, and of course, that was canceled. And we did it virtually. So, on the 13th, we had a NACO Town Hall meeting, and on the 20th, we met for an annual business meeting. So, we took care of new resolutions, updating our bylaws, and putting in a brand-new president, who is Gary Moore, familiar name, but he's from Boone County, Kentucky, and he is our new president. We elected a new second vice president, and her name is Winfrey, so Ms. Winfrey is from Illinois. There's a lot of different updates that I will share as the different topics come up and so forth, but it was put together extremely well, and the way we voted was interesting, too. But they calculated we had over 2,206 people that were actually voting that were designated, and you only have so many. Like, our county has this very small population, so we only have one vote, which was my vote, but depending on how many are in your county, how many votes you actually have. So Nevada has 44 votes throughout our 17 counties. Unfortunately, they weren't all there voting. We only had 24 that were actually voting. But it's hard to know. You don't know who's all on. They know, NACO does, because of the way you sign in with all your privacy, but their calculations were quick and expedient. It was just really an excellent way to do that, especially under the circumstances. And on the national committees, because there's many committees that all kinds of county commissioners and board members sit on, we have over 1,500 people that are sitting on national committees throughout the country, which is really kind of cool. On the local side, of course, our executive director, Dagney, is keeping us informed, especially what was going on with the special legislature, and I think all of us are getting emails on that. One of the biggest things, of course, was the mining, and the fact that the legislature went ahead to have them pay in advance again, like they used to. That was a problem for some of the smaller counties that actually used it in their general funds. And then, when everything came out at the end of the year, they had to pay back funds, and it put them in a lot of poor situations. So that was an interesting, very split vote, the way that came out. On the other hand, many of the counties are so low on funds because of the COVID and, of course, of the taxes and such that has affected us, that they probably need that extra money in advance, too. So, like I said, it was very split on how the legislature wanted to do that. I just wanted to be sure that you're all checking emails and such, so we stay on top of everything. And just one quick thing to share, July is the National Ice Cream Month, which contributes over $11 billion, with a B, to our economy. So with that, I hope you enjoy a special Sunday, or ice cream bar or something, to, we only have another week left to really do that and celebrate. Thank you all.
I attended the convention and tourism meeting. The only big issue that we dealt with was the cancellation of the chucker tournament for this year, for obviously, for obvious reasons, and excuse my voice, I'm having a little bit of asthma this morning. I'm sorry about that. So, one of the sad things about it is a lot of the supplies had already been ordered back and for 20, you know, the year 2020. So what the vendors are doing for us is they're doing 20, the 21, they're going to put the slash through the 20 and put 21 on it, so that we don't have to order a whole nother group of supplies that say 2020 on them, so that's nice, save us a little money there. But beyond that, really don't have anything else to report. Judy?
I don't have anything to report.
Brian?
No report.
Art? All right, we're going to go ahead and move on.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, no. Did you have anything to report? We're sorry. Didn't hear anything.
No, no, nothing to report. Still no form for pull-off.
All right, very good. Thank you. So, moving on to staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars. We're having a little bit of technical difficulties.
Unplug it from below, I think, and plug it back in.
Okay.
Okay, Patsy touched on it, for the record.
There we go. Okay, for the record, Patsy touched on it. The 31st special session ended July 19th. My understanding is our net proceeds that the state went to projected, because they need the money, but ours are staying the same, so hopefully that's good news for us. We're still working off of actual. We're going to be getting public, the public defender's going to be doing a quarterly report from here on with their quarterly report that they do in writing, so when we have questions, they can come answer them directly. Battle Mountain Airport Expansion Project, it looks like the second week of August, they'll be starting out here, so things are moving forward with it, which is good news. And then the Austin Airport Hangar Projects, we're waiting on environmental clearances, and we're hoping to start late August, but with everything going on like it is, it could be a little slower. And everything else I have is on the agenda. Ken Brown will not be here today for, he couldn't make it, so we'll have to table that item when we get to it.
Bert? The expansion for the airport, that, obviously, it's not going to impede the tankers or anything for the fires?
I'm not clear on your question.
The expansion for our airport, when it starts, it's not going to interfere at all?
Oh, no, no. The fires come before our expansion, for sure.
I didn't know if working, how that would work out, so.
Yeah, I think we've talked with the FBI, and we have plans to kind of work around them and they're, for them to work with us, so.
Good, thank you.
All right, moving on. Public comment for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board, reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Is there public comment? Okay, I have-
Muted. Unmuted.
To the best of my knowledge, and Robert can correct me on this if I'm incorrect, that they're looking at trying to pull another special session in the near future. Can you report on that, please?
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office. That's my understanding. We had a Sheriff's and Chiefs meeting yesterday that talked about this as well. And our understanding is it was initially not going to be pulled, and now the governor appears to be getting some flack for that, so that they're going to go ahead with it as early as Monday or Wednesday.
Can you explain?
As regarding law enforcement reform. Essentially, the information that we have deals with the changing the definitions of deadly force, use of force, and the ability for the Attorney General to directly prosecute law enforcement civilly and criminally.
So, which is a really big deal, as far as trying to get anybody to go into law enforcement. If the restrictions become too tight, you will not, so people, please pay attention to that session, because we have a hard enough time around the state and the nation, you know, getting law enforcement as it is. This will really hamper it, so just something for people to kind of pay attention to. So, moving on. Thank you. Go ahead.
Another public comment, just because it may pertain to what's being talked to today. As of yesterday, we had a total of 48 COVID cases in Land O' County with one active. Last night, we did have a coroner call that initially appears to be related to a COVID death. We're still investigating that. However, that sounds like what it's going to be pushed to.
Could you please speak up? I can barely hear you.
As of yesterday, the county has a total of 48 confirmed cases of COVID, with all recovered but one. As of yesterday, however, last night, we did receive a coroner call that initial investigation shows that it may be COVID-related, although that individual was listed as recovered. And I'm having conversations with the health officer for the county. There's different criteria related to whether it's recovered and/or eventually listed as a COVID death. But the investigation's still ongoing, so we're not ready to make that official determination. However, that information may be relevant today with some of your discussions.
All right, thank you.
Kathy? Brian asked if we can jump to number two. He's dragging his computer service.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move to number two. Action item to give direction to the county manager on how to proceed with the process of distribution of the funding that Land O' County may receive from the CARES Act program further to approve the county manager to submit a plan to the governor with the board specifying the amounts to disperse the applicable businesses, as well as reimbursement of part of the future amounts to any and all COVID-19-related expenses to the county. All right.
Okay, so as you guys are aware, the governor has put out, we can receive up to $505,129 for the first. It's 50% of the million dollars that we are allotted for the county. However, there are some caveats that come with that in the fine print, and I believe that it's, we would have to comply with the past, present, and any future orders of the governor, and that broadens the scope considerably. So I leave this up to the board, but I do not think it's a good idea for the county to accept this money.
I'm a little bit confused. This is the million dollars that we were supposed to get, and I see the new information today said they're only giving us half, and when we spend that, then we can go back for the other half, right?
Correct.
But this is, this is the money that is the reimbursement under the CARES Act for everything that we have paid, which a couple weeks ago was like close to $100,000. I think that could be reimbursed to us, but the rest that we can use to actually give grants to our businesses, is that correct?
That is correct. We can use it for anything COVID-related, so, you know, people working from home, if they needed computers, there's a variety pack of things we could use. However, it binds us to the governor's orders from here moving forward, and that, I believe that that's going to put a lot of pressure on our sheriff's department if they have to go enforce these orders, and it's going to open the county up to a lot more fine print to come in the future.
Wow.
Yeah, Gretchen, I'm definitely not in favor of this. It's nothing more than hate obedience. And I don't like the, that if we accept it, whatever future directives come, we're agreeing to it, and I'm not in favor of it.
So, the exact words that are in this, are in this order are, "The funding provided as direct payment from the state of Nevada pursuant to this certification is contingent on Land O' County's adherence to the governor's emergency directives and guidance from the local empowerment advisory panel." So, from here forward, we would fall directly under the governor. And I believe if this county wants to move forward with doing something for our local businesses that we're fortunate enough to be well off enough that we could do some sort of grant to our businesses, form a committee, and have them present their books to show where they had some losses, and the committee decide what we would do, and put some money in a fund to grant some of our local businesses that may have struggled through this process.
And I, I'm going to jump in there while I still have a voice. I agree with Brian. When I was first reading through this, I've seen a lot, I've read zillions of grants from working at the sheriff's office with the restrictions and things like that, but I never thought about it until reading again, the fine print basically says that, because prior to this, the counties all stood up and basically said, "We're not going to go on in and strong-arm our businesses," and this, I believe, is a way to have to strong-arm them. And I just can't, with, I, with anything in my soul, go into a business and tell them, because we received a million dollars when we have enough funding to help these businesses, that, that's not, I look at it, I'm not selling my soul to the devil for a million dollars, and I think that we can help these people out without this money. So, that's my opinion. Judy, do you have any?
I totally agree with everything here that's being said. We don't need to be strong-armed. And I like how you said, "Sell your soul to the devil," because that's exactly what it is.
You know, I have been so excited about the CARES money coming in to really help our businesses, and the amount that we've been looking at, I thought, you know, they can retrofit, they can do their ventilation systems, purifiers for the ventilation. I mean, there was just so much I thought we could do as a county. And my understanding was, since this is from the federal government, that it would be passed right on to the county. So this is, this is a real kick in the pants to find out that now the governor is going to come in with his control over the top of it, I guess, and I'm, I certainly agree. I don't, I don't want him in the middle of what we're doing. And like you said, we, many counties are already stepping up and saying, "We want to enforce this." If you, if you have been notified that you are, you have been subjected to COVID-19, and we want you quarantined for two weeks, and those people don't quarantine, they can go in and arrest them, they can go in and penalize them, and do all kinds of things. And some counties are doing that already. And like you said, we've opted to say, "We're not coming down on it. The businesses have to make a living. We understand that. We'll just do everything we can to follow all the good rules to say stay." So I'd have to agree, but I guess with that, I'm saying, man, we have to look further. I have to see what we can do about this, and what other counties are doing also. So I would say maybe we can put this back on the agenda again. It doesn't, doesn't have to be done this minute, does it?
Well, I was, what I was looking at, a suggestion, was maybe we can go back and look at some of the interest off of our net proceeds to see if we have some extra money there, that we can start the grant process, you know, looking at grant processes, because I don't want to drag our feet either. If we can, maybe on the next agenda, we can get, at least get the ball rolling on how we can do this. And, I mean, we can follow, you know, some of the guidelines that they've already, I don't want to reinvent the wheel as far as how to do it, because that, those processes have already been done. But I think that we can get, you know, maybe some community members, some county members, and we come together and figure out how to help our businesses in some degree. But something interesting, too, like you said, you didn't realize how the state put their spin on it. I, from being on the hospital board, I spoke with Jason yesterday, made him read through, because the hospital received like $3.4 million, excuse me. And so I said, "You need to go back and read the caveats of that," and nowhere in there does it have restraints, anything like this at all. And so, and that's federal money, but-
But they're not the county.
No, I understand that, but I wanted to see the difference between us, because they want us to enforce, he wants us to enforce what he has to say, and I just, like I said, I, I can't do that.
So, to answer your question, Patsy, I believe they wanted us to have a response into them for the request of this money tonight after this meeting, so it'd be in by tomorrow. So, putting it on a future agenda, I don't see that being, it's not eligible at that point, because we don't have our request in within the timeframe.
But, but they didn't give us any timeframe. When did you get the letter that this had decided conditions?
Oh, yeah, we had conditions, timeline. That was the other thing, was the big rush. Just one second, Judy. There was a, they wanted it in after this meeting, and all of a sudden, we had to have our answers, and everything signed by today, so it's like, what's the big hurry of why you have to have it this minute? And so that was the other red flag, is, yeah, it came through that we had to have it.
Okay, so the question is, I didn't think the federal funds of the CARES Acts were predicated on this. So the governor put the spin-
Yes.
What, in the last, in the session? Is that what he did? So, we need to go back and look, so I guess for the answer for now, and I'm sure we'll take care of that, is we can't step up, which means if we put, but we still can look into it and find out from our delegation, right, our Washington delegation? Like, if they're giving you money to the state, and now the state can't even pass it down, they get to keep it. They get to keep it, so they don't have to pass it on down to the counties.
And anything we wouldn't use, they would get to keep as well.
Right.
But I think you and Kathy are talking about two entirely different things. Kathy's talking about us county-funded.
Right, no, that's one thing, but I'm saying, I still think we need to investigate further. And, but I appreciate if the timeline is now, and my question is, when did they give us all of these conditions?
Within the last two weeks, week, right?
But I've never seen it.
I say we don't take their money.
We've received an email-
And we're being responsible in helping them solve their state's shortfall.
We received an email that basically outlined what we had to have, and we had a deadline that we had to submit it by, by tomorrow. So there's two deadlines. There's a deadline to NACO, as to if we wanted to jump on board with them and use their contractors and their committee to do the process for the grants for the local businesses.
The applications.
Our deadline was with them is tomorrow. Our deadline for the federal grant money is deadline as well tomorrow. We had to do a certification form. We had to do a no more than four-page proposal to them outlining specifically where we were going to apply all the money. And then we had three different spreadsheets that Laken's been working on of where all the money would go. Then we also would have to do monthly reporting for them.
Okay, I guess, yeah, because I'm disappointed, because I didn't see anything to put that in ahead of time for us to go through. Like I said, I just got this information today.
We got the request for it, but we didn't get the information until, was it yesterday? Yesterday, as far as the clause, it's number eight on the certification.
Okay, thank you.
Robert, one second. Judy?
Oh, go ahead, Robert.
So, Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, just, I don't know if this helps or not, but frequently, we have obtained grants from the state, and they're typically called a pass-through grant from the feds, so the state gets a chunk of money. They then create grants themselves, which they add a lot of their own restrictions to, and then pass them down to us, so then we not only have to adhere to the federal standards, we have to adhere to whatever the standards are the state sets out, which is something that this appears to be the same way, that the state got a chunk of money, and they are now giving out additional restrictions.
You know, I appreciate what you're saying. That's why we don't like to do the grants, because of the harsh conditions, and so we try not to. But with the CARES money, my understanding was that so much was designated automatically to all of the counties. That was the whole point of what our Washington delegation was getting for us. And now we're saying, you know, if you don't step up and give us your soul, then I'm sorry, you're not going to get the money, so, okay, I'm saddened to hear that.
Actually, I was going to comment that I didn't see, you know, how it was legal that the feds had given us, given the state the money for the counties, and then for our governor to put these stipulations, but Robert actually explained it, and unfortunately, I guess, if that's what they can do. I'm with Patsy, maybe getting with our state delegation to see if there's any way around, around the governor, if we can receive funds directly from the state. I mean, not the state, but the government, federal. Because I'm sure if, if they had any idea of what our governor was doing, they wouldn't have been giving us, giving the money.
Well, I think the sad part about this is the county, the counties who really need the money, it really strong-arms them into doing what they want them to do, and I just think that that's very sad.
Art lost us, so he would like us to call for his vote if we could.
It just says, "Give direction." Action item, give direction.
So, do we just know, don't do anything with it, because we don't want it? What do we do?
Well, I was going to say, maybe I can make a motion that we, well, we don't even really need a motion to give direction, to have Bert check into getting in contact with-
I can report back to the board, but if we could possibly put it in a motion of some sort to say that we are not accepting the-
We're going to come on the funds, we're just to come on the funds.
Yeah, I'll make that motion, then, that we, we don't want to go through with this, that we don't want to apply for the, for the CARES Act funding from the state.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, all right, very good. We're going to go ahead and move on, and Patsy's going to finish reading for me before, because I won't have a voice if I keep going, so. Thank you all for that.
Drink some, drink some water, and we'll bring you up soon, okay. We're moving the note back to the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Land O' County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. Number one, approval of July 23rd, 2020 Agenda Notice. Number two, approval of February 27th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of May 7th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number four, approval of May 14th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number five, approval of May 19th, 2020 Special Budget Workshop Meeting Minutes. Number six, approval of May 21st, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number seven, approval of May 28th, 2020 Special Meeting Minutes. Number eight, approval of June 11th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number nine, approval of June 25th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. Number 10, approval of July 9th, 2020 Meeting Minutes. And number 11, approval of payroll change requests. Okay, I'd say I do have to pull number one, and we did not have any other minutes except number nine, which is approval of June 25th. We did receive the June 25th minutes, if anybody has corrections on that one. And then we didn't receive any payroll change requests. So the only thing under the agenda, consent agenda, that we received, that we can approve, is the June 25th, 2030, 2020 Meeting Minutes.
All right, so have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve June 25th, 2020 Meeting Minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Brian seconded?
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Brian seconded that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to number one, which is approval of the agenda notice. And we do need to have in there, it's approval of July 23rd, amended agenda notice. So I need a motion for the amended agenda notice.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. Brian seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and it passes. Number one, Commissioners, for possible action to approve or disapprove the payment of bills. If anybody has any question on that, we are going to pull one, that is to point S, which is Brian's employer, 20- If anybody has any question on that, we are going to pull one, um, that is to point S, which is Brian's employer, two zero eight, three nine eight. So if I could have a motion without that check and for the rest of the payment of bills.
I, uh, I do have a comment before I make my motion. I had commented before, I'd asked that, um, the, um, the style of our payment of the bills has changed. And it was quite some time ago, I asked that we go, you know, for some reason, we went to customer numbers. You know, we don't have descriptions anymore, we don't know what we're approving, uh, account numbers, customer numbers, whatnot. Um, like I said, this, for years, it's always had a pretty clear description. And we're back again, or nothing has changed after I requested these to be changed from a customer number, account number. We need itemization for transparency. That's just my comment on that. With that being said, I will make a motion to approve the payment of the bills. We will remove check number two zero eight, three nine eight.
I'll second.
Thank you, Judy made the motion and Brian seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion that we approve check number two zero eight, three nine eight.
I'll second it.
Judy made the motion, thank you.
We, we would like to.
Are you talking, okay. Kathy seconded that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I abstained.
And Brian abstains, thank you so much. Okay, we are moving on down to number three, are you okay?
Patsy, we have, we have a comment?
Um, Lakin Sullivan, for the record, I just wanted to comment on Judy's concern about the, the check register. If you do want to see a more detailed one, we can, we can, you can look at the detail register, but we had to change an employee. So Shannon's doing it now, and the way that, um, the Tyler system prints our checks, if we don't put it, the, the account number or ID number, it won't show on the check stub, because we were putting the description in that spot. And so the account numbers and stuff weren't showing on the check stub, and so then the businesses get confused, because, you know, they don't, the businesses don't want to know what we bought, they already know what we bought, they want to know the invoice number or the account number. So we're in the process of trying to get that fixed, like have it print that description line on the check stub with that account number, but it's just a process.
So is that like an extra column that has to be added in?
Yeah.
Because those, the, those columns where that information that it shows here are utilized specifically for the invoice and the check number, so we can't utilize those two spots. We have to have a second, another third spot for the, um, if the itemization.
Yeah, the description line item isn't printing on the check stub, so that's why you're not able to see it on the check register.
And you guys are in the process of getting that fixed?
Shannon was supposed to reach out to Tyler and figure out if there's a way to get both of them to print on there.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Because is there, well, you're still there, if that, if they can't do that, is there another way without wasting a ton of paper? That we can have that information, is there another report that can be ran? So we can know what that, this stuff is.
We can include the detail register in the commission packet instead, or we could do the detail register and the check register. It will make the packet bigger, but we could include both. If we take the check register out, you won't have the check numbers, so that's why we always put that one in there. But we could include the detail register with it.
You know, a, a lot of these are, are routine, and a lot of them, we do have questions on. And I just individually choose to call and check ahead of time and, and have the ladies pull them for me, because I do have questions as it goes on. And I hate to see us, you know, take down another whole tree.
Well, yeah, and it's like.
If we don't really need it.
Yeah, if you have any questions, you can call on a certain bill and we can explain to you what it's for. Or you can come in and look at the detail register anytime. It's just the way that the information's printed on the check is why it's looking like that.
Thank you very much.
Number three, we are deferring, which brings us to number four, under commissioners' update and presentation.
Our circuits are busy, please try your call again later. Announcement eight, switch one, one, two, dash, six.
Update and presentation only, from Ellen Calt representing our pool pack. Welcome, Ellen. Do we want to take a break?
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and take a ten-minute break so we can get this corrected. We're going to go ahead with number four, update and presentation. Right, one second. Okay, hold on, sorry. Ellen, you're on.
Uh, good morning, uh, for the record, my name is Ellen Calt, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for PoolPact, and I appreciate the opportunity to, to appear before the Lander County Commissioners today. What I'd like to do in the presentation today. What I'd like to do is provide an overview of PoolPact, what we do. We'll talk about the coverage limits, the budgets, review the program services that are offered by PoolPact, talk about our membership, the different companies involved, our strategic partners, have a discussion about the critical success factors going forward, and then open it up for question and answers as we go along. I've provided, uh, each one of the board members and the clerk of the board, a, uh, tri-fold brochure that's an overview of PoolPact, and this is a good reference guide for you folks to keep handy, um, of the programs and services that are provided by your member-owned, member-service consortium known as PoolPact. So let's look at our mission statement. The Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool, Member Service Consortium, provides interactive risk management resources to public agencies. Okay, we provide interactive risk management's resources to public agencies, at our schools, cities, counties, and general districts. The pool excels in innovative solutions to help members serve the public. It provides financial strength, security, and durability, cost-effective risk sharing and financing, interactive claim services, member network and resource, resource sharing. Our mission statement says that we are member governed, we're stewards of the public assets, we're committed to quality member services, and we are focused on the future. These were all determined by a retreat that we held in Eureka County many, many years ago, and it was updated a couple of different times by the members. The goals of Pool is to incorporate risk management into member services, um, management strategies. So as employees, uh, within Lander County are doing their work, hopefully they're thinking about how to be safe, how to most efficiently and effectively, uh, do their work. Uh, the pool's goal is to maintain financial strength, to meet our commitment to the members. For when we have claims, we have the resources in which to pay those claims. When we enter into contracts to provide service providers to do work on behalf of our members, that we have the financial strength to do that. Our goal is to provide innovative education, training, and support, as a primary support, as part of your member service belonging to PoolPact, to grant membership privileges to public agencies that demonstrate a commitment to the mission, the vision, the values of PoolPact. Pool's goals also include to provide stunning, sustainable service, to share resources between members, so that all members, all members succeed, both the big members as well as the small members. The pool's vision is, uh, to, uh, members anticipate and manage risk encountered as public agencies. Membership is a privilege earned by effective agencies committed to sharing resources to benefit their employees and the public they serve. And the pool's motto is, we cooperatively deliver public agency risk management solutions. So nowhere in that did we even talk about the I word, the word insurance. So if you look at the organizational structure, the members are the center of everything that we do, and we have different companies, management companies, our workers' comp program, our workers' comp captive, we have the PRI, our human resources that are provided, our property cyber and casualty pool, and then, uh, our property casualty and cyber captive program that creates what we call the power of the pool. So it's members-led, who, who's on the leadership team? The executive committee of Pool is chaired by Mr. Cash Minor, he's the Assistant County Manager, Chief Financial Officer for Elko, Josh Foley, Joff Stark, Dan Murphy, Gina Rackley, Ann Seer, and Jerry Icke. So we have members from counties, cities, uh, school districts, and special districts. On the workers' comp program, the pact executive committee is chaired by Mr. Paul Johnson, the Chief Financial Officer for White Pine County School District, Cash Minor, Mike Giles, um, the, from the city of Lovock, the mayor of the city of Lovock, Josh Foley, Chris Mulkern's from the town of Tonopah, Cindy Hicksonbaugh from Purge County General Hospital, and Elizabeth Francis make up the executive committee of our workers' comp program. Very quickly, looking at the budget, um, on the left-hand slide, you can see in the, the current year that we're in, that seventy-nine percent of the pool's budget pays for the loss fund and insurance expenses, okay? So to pay the claims, seventy-nine percent of the, every dollar we collect goes to, uh, to pay for claims. Program expenses are fifteen percent, and those are those services that we're going to talk about in a few minutes. Our admin costs are five percent, and the contingency or ending balance is, uh, is one percent. On the workers' comp, the, uh, the loss fund and the insurance expense is seventy-two percent, the admin expense is twelve percent. And the reason that is, is that the, uh, third-party administrator, ASC Davies, that manages workers' comp, uh, workers' comp's claims, um, uh, take more staff time, energy, and effort to manage those claims. Um, our program expenses are twelve percent, and, uh, we have a contingency of three percent in the workers' comp program. So let's look at the, uh, pool coverage summary. One of the things about being in a pool is getting that, uh, higher limits, uh, pooling cities, counties, schools, GIDEs, uh, together, hospitals together, to get higher coverage limits. And you can see, uh, some of the limits, the, uh, single limits of, uh, ten million dollars, um, on liability limits. We provide, uh, three hundred million dollars in property, uh, coverage for all the members, and why is that number so high? You know, uh, given, you know, earthquake and flood coverage that potentially could happen, uh, we need to have high limits if, you know, if a lot of property was, uh, had, had damages. You can see the various, uh, layers of coverage that are provided, uh, to, to our members. Next, what I'd like to talk about is our risk management programs and our, our risk management services that are provided. You know, the training, the training that we provide through our e-learning. Just, just yesterday, we had, um, a, a webinar, uh, that we put on for fraud prevention and awareness as it relates to the new cyber, uh, fraud that's going on in ACH and, and the business, um, you know, business email compromise. We provide a ton of training, uh, we had trainings for schools, um, uh, yesterday, or day before yesterday, dealing with, um, you know, school safety in this new, uh, you know, virtual or blended environment. Uh, our e-learning portal, um, is tremendous. We have, uh, an e-learning master, a full-time person, that is developing content and getting information out there, getting, uh, different, getting our members all hooked up to that. They provide, uh, ongoing classes on risk management, health and wellness, emergency medical services, fire safety, human resources, employee safety. A lot of those different types of programs can be done in our e-learning environment. And why is that important? Well, the employees can do that whether they're working from home, you know, whether they're, you know, uh, the e-learning portal is open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Risk management onsite programs, we come on out, um, doing, you know, we're doing swimming pool safety. As a matter of fact, I believe, uh, your pool folks said you guys aren't opening your pool this year, uh, so clearly we won't be coming out and doing that, that pool training. We do, uh, uh, recreational parks, uh, that type of thing, thermal imaging of buildings, um, a lot of different risk control, um, types of services, fire extinguisher training, uh, school bus safety, those type of hazardous communications, those type of programs. On the law enforcement side, uh, in police protection, we provide, uh, training policies from LMRI, uh, Jack Ryan, a national company. Uh, with all the, uh, use of force and those different things going on, um, we've provided additional training in the last couple of months. They will be involved, uh, in reviewing stuff and preparing for the special session as it relates to, uh, the law enforcement and some of the issues that are, that are there. We've been working on preparation for that. We thought that it was going to probably dovetail this last session, um, we were hoping it wouldn't raise its head, but it appears that it will be. Risk management grant programs, we provide grants to member agencies, um, and Lander County has been a beneficiary of, um, some risk management grants that you've been able to take advantage of. On the workers' comp, we have, uh, twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, uh, nurse triage program that, that your injured worker can, uh, go online, uh, call, you know, use their smartphone, um, get an initial assessment done to find out if they need to go, um, you know, go to ER for service, or if it's something, you know, put a Band-Aid on and, uh, monitor the situation and, and that type of thing. Cybersecurity is really huge, um, and I noticed on your next agenda item, you know, one of our programs we're rolling out is, um, Identity Guard. We're seeing a lot of our members, um, getting, uh, bogus, uh, unemployment claims. And we, uh, we've had our cyber expert go to different entities into the system to try to see if their system was hacked, and it does not appear that it's within the system, uh, within the members, but it's an outside system. They're trying to figure out where, where those breaches are happening. We put on an annual cyber summit, uh, our loss control committee just approved a NOBE4, it's a training software that your employees can get, um, get connected with, and it requires them to go through some basic training. And then as part of that, they'll do some email phishing and siphing and those type of things to see if they will fall for that clickbait. And if they do accidentally click and follow that email that they weren't supposed to log on to, all of a sudden it'll pop up and says, hey, you know, this was a, uh, training, you were not supposed to click this, you're going to end up having to go to, uh, watch a training session on, uh, learning how to make sure that you were careful on identifying which emails you open and which ones you don't. We provide MSDS online, the material data, data safety sheets, uh, to the members, um, so that, uh, that information is available to keep them safe. On our human resource side, Mr. John Bates is your HR business partner, uh, annually, they work to develop a work plan. Uh, there can be some onsite training, um, there's remote training, we're getting more and more of our training. We're delivering on the Zoom platform or the webinar-type, uh, platform where folks can, uh, participate, you know, via the computer versus onsite. But as, uh, the conditions warrant, uh, they will come back out and, uh, to the members and do that. We've provided several alerts, uh, especially as it relates to care, and some of the HR policies and rules associated with COVID nineteen, uh, we've pushed forward some alerts to the members to assist in that. Annually, we put on an HR, uh, conference, and, uh, that's scheduled for October, pending the outcome, uh, may have to be a part of it, might have to be virtual. But we provide a tremendous number of resources available for, uh, our members to take advantage of. Because a lot of times, the members don't have the ability to pay for those in the aggregate, or there's not enough work for a full-time person, but, uh, having, pooling these together, these programs and services can help benefit the entire membership. You can see that we have, uh, fifteen of the counties as members, uh, the towns, cities, and, uh, fourteen school district, or, excuse me, fifteen school districts are also members, and then you have a lot of the, uh, special districts. It's what makes up, uh, you know, PoolPact in, within our membership. So our strategic partners, Nevada Risk Pooling, um, that's the company that I work for, Wayne Carlson is our executive director, Mike Corbaldi is the operations officer, Marshall Smith is the risk manager, uh, we run the day-to-day operations of Pool and Pact. Pooling Resource, Inc., that's the HR, uh, component, and Stacy Norbeck is the general manager, um, of PRI or PoolPact HR. Willis Re, Inc., um, is our, uh, insurance broker, um, we have representatives, uh, Mary Ray and Stephen Romero. And, uh, our third-party administrator, Davies Claim Solutions, uh, used to be ASC, uh, now it's just a new name, uh, Davies Claim Solution, uh, with Donna Squires and Margaret, um, doing none of the workers' comp. So the question becomes, you know, uh, an open discussion, what are some of the issues that you folks are, have, that we may be able to be of assistance? You know, um, are we meeting your needs, um, for Lander County? I know Keith was involved, and we've met with Bert, uh, had some conversations, uh, both myself and Mike Corbaldi, to, uh, get an understanding of what we can do to, uh, continue to have, uh, Lander County be one of the leaders, uh, of the rural counties, uh, within the state. Clearly, we're not going to solve this in, you know, in fifteen minutes or two-week discussion, but, um, you know, would love to have some feedback. Patsy's been involved, um, uh, with PoolPact and attended our annual meetings and some of our training, and I believe you folks have as well. I'll, uh, pause for a moment and, uh, perhaps, uh, there's some comments or feedback that you may have.
Thank you, Ellen, um, we always appreciate you, you coming out to share, um, all the information that you do do, because we forget. And, um, and I know, uh, you're right there when we make the phone call, but I do have a couple of concerns, um. This new breed of the, uh, what they call privacy data, privacy laws is really kind of scary, I think. I think. They have all kinds of acronyms that I don't even know what they're they're asking for anymore, and I'm going, this affects us with our internal investigations and civil litigations and and just answering some of our regulatory requests and such. And the other one I have a problem with is the social media policies now with all the federal standards. So I'm assuming you folks are all up to date on that and are still working within that and will be giving us the information so we can update our HR or whatever we need to do on that, too.
Yeah, if I could address a couple of those. The our HR folks stay on top of the issue model policies that are available through our website on the member portal, and I know you folks, your folks have access to that. And then when new policies come out, they push out an alert, okay? So that so that we are staying on top of the, you know, the latest laws and regulations. Cyber, wow, that's changing every day and some of the challenges that we have. We've had Tony Rucci come out and do passive network assessments for many of our members, including Lander County, and for some members, it might be time for for them to engage on a second look, you know, because if it was done three years ago, obviously, the networks may have changed. And one of the things we're totally are very concerned about is people doing backups and having a network that is backed up not only, you know, physically, but also off-site and perhaps even on the cloud, because we've had seen some ransomware issues, and we ended up creating a separate forum for cyber that more clearly defines what is covered and not and what is not covered under our cyber. And we've been working extremely hard on that. But yes, data privacy and cyber is a big concern going forward and what would be covered and not covered, and, you know, what's an incident versus perhaps a potential breach. These are some of the issues that we have been trying to stay on top of.
That's a question. So what does the county do? Like, I know the sheriff's office.
The sheriff's office for their backup, he has his IT room where he does all the backup. What does the county do? Does each does each computer back up to the cloud? Do we have our own IT person for all of our stuff? I mean, I know Lura does the IT stuff, but where does all of the rest of the county stuff all back up to?
I know this one.
Anna Panola, we have, it's a Z drive that everything is backed up to.
And where?
It's in the server room.
It's in the server room?
Yes.
Thank you.
Robert, what is a Z drive?
Separate from the A drive or the E drive. Ours is called the J and the R.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office. It's it sounds like they're just using a network share to back it up to a server, which means it's just a set of hard drives in the server room that things are backed up to. It's nothing specific or special. But I and I, again, you'd have to ask whoever you the county's contracting with IT to find out if everyone's systems are backed up, or if there's what the security is on them. There's a whole slew of questions that go along with that.
So is that, okay. So, I'm lost. Go ahead.
So we did, as Alan kind of touched on, we did talk with Mike Ribletti, and he gave us, we need to do a lot more for our system. Some of the concerns right now with the fraud, the the class that we had yesterday that, you know, was by via Zoom, touched on a lot of counties being, or not counties so much, but cities and other municipalities being held hostage by these hacks. They hack in and they take everybody's information, and then they they are getting more technical to the point now to where they know what it's worth to the county to not pay for it and what it's worth for them to pay for it, and they stay just under it and hold you hostage with your own employee's information. So it's going to be a future agenda item that's going to be much more in-depth, and we might be looking at possibly another IT. And one of our options are to back it up every night and take it off and put it on a separate server, a computer that is completely disconnected from our current system, or if somebody did go in there, we still have all of our information, they aren't holding us hostage. So it's something that we're looking into, but it's it's new and moving fast.
I would like to thank you guys for your active membership and participation in PoolPACT. You know, we're here to serve your needs, and if there's needs that come up, that questions that you have, feel free to reach out to us, go to our website, poolpack.com, you know, and there's all our contact information that's out there, or feel free to give us a call. We're happy to continue to meet your needs and work with you folks to address your risk management needs.
Thank you, Alan. Safe travels.
Thank you.
For possible action to approve, disapprove, Lander County?
For possible action to approve, disapprove, Lander County to provide all county employees and cover volunteers with the Identity Guard product for the period of time to be determined by the Lander County Board of Commissioners due to the unemployment scam?
Okay, so some quick backup on the unemployment scam in the last two weeks is what's is what's happened, is we're getting a lot of unemployment claims for employees that are currently working. So it's completely fake, and the Attorney General has created a COVID-19 task force for these scams because it's related to COVID-19 with a lot of people going out of work. So these people, and we don't know where they're getting the information at the time when we put this on the agenda. We weren't sure if they had got it from the county or if they were getting it from some some other place, but they're they're putting in for unemployment with proper social security numbers and a lot more to go with it. So I'm going to quickly read off the Attorney General's task force, kind of their their checklist, and then and then I'm probably going to kick this over to Liz because she knows a lot more about what what we have going on. But here's, and they do provide some guidance for any victims, and I'm going to give you guys a number at the end of this, but here's the information that they give out for everybody because I know there's a lot of people in the community and the county that are concerned with this. They've almost got all of us in Lander County now have claimed for unemployment and fraudulent unemployment, I should say. Never give out your personal or financial information over the phone. Thoroughly review all financial statements for any unusual activity. Immediately contact the company if an item looks suspicious. Shred or destroy credit card statements, bills, insurance papers, or bank statements before throwing them out. Do not carry your social security card in your wallet. Be wary of anyone calling to confirm personal or financial information. Often, these are criminals trying to obtain the facts under the guise of confirmation. Release your social security number only when absolutely necessary or when required by law. Ask how you can remove unnecessary information or information that is not required for the service you are receiving. Check credit card reports, bank information, medical information that may have details that need to be removed or secured. Do not provide or validate personal information from contacts not initiated by you. Protect and update passwords to your online accounts regularly. When creating passwords and PINs, do not use anything that could be discovered easily by thieves. Memorize all your passwords and PINs. Remove old accounts and passwords that are no longer in use. Use additional security measures provided for your accounts whenever available. Check your local police department if you think that you your identity has been stolen. And if you think an identity thief is using your social security number, call the Social Security Fraud Hotline. And this number is for anybody that needs to get a PIN out, 1-800-269-0271. And there is Ashley Forrest that can be contacted at aforest@ag.nv.gov, or a phone number of
So basically, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take this form that the Attorney General emailed me, and I'm going to give it to all the county employees, so they'll have all this information that they can kind of go through and do what they need to do. As far as what all I did, I have forty-eight claims, fraud claims. I've already been working with the Department of Employment and Training. I've already submitted all the fraud claims back. I did it online, and I did it by the paper process. There really isn't much more we can do about it until they give us more information, but just try and tell our employees to protect themselves, sorry.
Have you notified who was, those claims were, I mean, the people involved? Have you notified them?
Yes, yes.
What a mess.
And we get more daily.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of keep coming in.
Are there other counties that are getting?
Every county.
Every county?
Yep.
So I guess we need to know more about this Identity Guard product.
Is now, is that the same, when we had identity theft, was that the same thing that we had to put in place a couple of years ago?
It's a different company.
Who was?
We have Legal Shield.
Legal Shield.
All right.
And you guys put that in place for those for like seven years.
Okay.
For certain employees where their social securities were leaked.
So now are we, is this on here to do the entire county, to do all the?
It's however you guys want to do it.
Or or if you want to do anything at all.
Yeah.
You know, it's it's entirely up to the the Board of Commissioners here, but we is what, we want to make sure that any, at the time when we had, when this first started coming through, we thought maybe it was a breach of our system. And now we're finding out it probably wasn't a breach of our system per se, that that maybe it was of social security or somewhere else that they actually got in because they're hitting so many other counties.
Well, I'm sure that there the Dieter is, is Dieter saying anything about this of?
Not to me. I don't know. Alan touched on topic of this a little bit ago when he was up there. I don't know how much information PoolPACT has on this.
For the record, my name's Alan Calt, and as of Monday, I filed a fraudulent unemployment claim as well. What what our IT folks are finding out, it is not within our within our members' systems, okay? And, you know, we even did our system this week, and I think by the end of the week, probably everybody in our office will have won the lottery. We believe it's potentially Pers or the Social Security Administration. What we have found out on the Dieter website and talking with the folks at Dieter is, in order to help those people fast-track unemployment, you type in a name, you put a social security number in, it it will help auto-correct. And let's just say that in Nevada, you type 530 and, you know, a couple of other numbers, and, you know, you put Kathleen Ancho's name in, all of a sudden, it's going to list everywhere you've worked the last however period of time, because we were very concerned because we work for, I work for NRP, not PoolPACT, and it showed up as NRP and and as well as PRMS. So they're trying to get the auto-populate from the Dieter website to not work. Or the other thing that's happening is if the if they're on the dark web, if they're buying your name and social security number, then they insert that, and then it again picks up the employment information and it automatically files. Clearly, this is a COVID deal because of the increased unemployment, and the state of Nevada, Florida, and Texas are some of the bigger places that are getting inundated with this because of the enhanced unemployment benefit and the amount of unemployment because of the tourist-based economy. You know, Nevada has a very high unemployment, so they figure, you know, that the likelihood of getting caught is remote, but there's so many of them going through, you know, it's bogging down. The sad thing is, this is preventing people who really need to get the unemployment benefits because they're having to devote quite a bit of attention and resources to this problem. And it's prevalent in all seventeen counties right now. We don't believe there's a county that's not had somebody, you know, that's fraudulently filed, you know, for these claims. So we're working hard. So PoolPACT, we've identified Identity Guard. We have a master contract with them. They're giving our members the quote Costco discount, if you will, to provide this. It's a it's a resource that we're recommending folks take advantage of, and some entities are saying what they'll do is they'll do it for just the members that have been compromised. Others are saying, you know what, we're going to do it for our entire employee base. And, you know, that's a decision of the governing body to make that decision, but I think it is it is important. And like I said earlier this week, it came, got hit close to home when I received an email from staff saying, you know, that they were verifying that I had put in for unemployment. You know, Dieter, that's good news, that at least Dieter is doing that to the employer. And then clearly, you know, it's showing up on fraud, but I imagine you guys are getting them probably, what, daily?
Yeah.
Yeah, new names hitting the list and not good.
So Alan, we would have to take this on as a whole county. We can't say if any of our our employees would like to, that they could sign up with that company individually?
So they could, you could do that as well, but I think, you know, I think it makes sense for all those that have been affected, so that that a fraudulent claim has has occurred, that it would make sense for the entity to pay that themselves. And I want to say it's thirty bucks a year or fifty bucks a year, it's?
I think it's fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, okay, yeah. So it's it's reasonable for a peace of mind. If you look at, you know, what that cost is and the damage that it can cause an employee, you know, to have that identity stolen, and let's say that this is just the tip of the iceberg, hopefully, this is a one-and-done scenario where, you know, their information is not going to be, you know, compromised beyond just that fraudulent unemployment thing. But, you know, if they have that information out there and, you know, they start getting into their bank accounts or messing their credit, you know, this service is well worth worth the money.
Well, I I understand what you're saying. I guess the the thing I keep thinking of is, everything that we belong to has been hacked. I mean, Blue Cross Shield was hacked, the Veterans Association's been hacked, I mean, everybody I know, Equifax has been hacked. I mean, if if people truly don't have an identity guard somewhere, I think that's that's something that they they should be thinking about. So I'm wondering how many of our folks really do have that and don't need us to do something on top of it. I guess that's what I'm thinking, because everybody out there is getting hacked one way or another, so we're all at such a high risk. And I and I know because we were at fault, we did, we did take that on to to go with with one of the companies for a long time, but I'm I'm wondering if if those folks truly do have something individually, and if they don't, we we could look at doing something for the ones that that have been, but I think I would like to ask them, do you have an identity theft guard, you know, yourself personally, before we just automatically start covering all of our employees? I think that's just a wise thing, prudent to do.
Thank you. So do we want to, I mean, I don't know.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office. Speaking from the law enforcement side of this, I have a couple of comments. One, it's very difficult for identity theft prosecution and investigation. We typically refer people to the FTC, it's Federal Trade Commission. We can put their system name into a system, but it's unlikely and it's difficult to recover from. Additionally, for this service, my suggestion would be for the countywide to, if you chose to approve all employees and then allow them to opt in. Based on what the HR assistant's saying, she gets daily notices, so you're going to create a whole mess for her to have to keep going back to people to try and get them added to this, where if you allowed all the county employees to opt into it, and then they could fill out a form and just move forward with that instead of having to keep going back and forth.
Or the other way is is to do it, go ahead and do it, and if they don't want it to opt out, then to contact and just, I mean, that you know that we'll do all the employees, and if they don't want it, they can just contact you and say, I'll just opt out of that because I already have coverage, which is easier.
It's my understanding, and I don't know, maybe Alan can help, I have to put them on the program. I have to add each, every one of them, so they they would have the choice to tell me whether they wanted to or not.
Okay.
And I know- And I know some of them, Patty answered your question, some of them do have their own protection, so they weren't concerned about it, but there's, there's quite a few of them that don't. And, but my advice to them was to get it. So that was before we even decided to come in front of you guys, and I got this because this is how the other counties are proceeding.
And, and this, this is a real good price on this one too. So we could just offer them that, that's true. Since it wasn't our fault per se, you know, but it's another service that, I mean, I know we try and do a lot, everything from our, our air, air transport for health services and all the other things that we, we try and do. But I mean, you know, it isn't cradle to grave, I mean, we still don't, we can't do everything for them. So I'm going, well, at least we could offer that and say, if you don't have it, this is a, this is one to look into that's made available for you at a good price.
Liz, do you know how many employees we have?
How many we have in the county? Roughly around a hundred and fifty.
Okay, what about, I think, before Alan said it, I was thinking of, of the PERS. Because I'm trying to think of, of a statewide organization that all of the counties are involved with, and, and I thought of PERS too. So, do you know how many are on the PERS system as well?
Every one of our full-time employees are on the PERS system.
Okay, and we've got the volunteers?
Yes, and the volunteers, the part-times are not on the PERS.
Okay. So let's roughly say, just high estimate, two hundred employees, maybe, people, I mean?
Then if you do do it, your other option, you, you would have to pick out like a, how long you want to stay with the contract.
So then maybe can we, is this asking too much to put it back on the agenda for prices? You know, for like one year, two years, three years, you know, how much it's going to totally cost the county?
No, we can do that.
Can we do that? So we just have a little bit better idea of how much? And then by then, we're going to know how many more counties for the county have benefited as well.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
I don't think it's the county's responsibility to pay for somebody's identity theft. I mean, if you don't want to be subjected to it, you know, buy it. I just, I don't think that it's our responsibility to have to pay for that.
Okay.
I, you know, just doing a rough math, it would be, at the max, fifteen thousand dollars.
Oh, that's a lot.
You know, you can look at it as a lot, but then on the other hand, then again, it's really not. I mean, if, if this is something that was based through a system that, that came through the county, that, that the people that aren't county employees aren't subject to or weren't targeted, and it's the county's responsibility to protect them as well.
Or a suggestion might be that we could may, is it something that we could do that, like a payroll deduction? If they were, if they wanted it, we could sign them up and they could do a payroll deduction like we do on some of the insurances? Like in life insurance and things like that, is that something that's possible?
In our payroll system, we don't currently have a yearly deduction, like it's more of a bi-weekly or monthly. If this is just a fifty-nine dollar yearly cost, that's something the employees could just pay themselves for the year.
Okay.
And so when we put this on the agenda, we were not sure if the breach came from inside, and that's why it was on the agenda. It wasn't on the agenda now that we know more, that it's, that this is statewide. I, I see Patty and Brian's point, I don't think that the county should be responsible for, I mean,
Okay.
That's just my personal stance, and I just wanted to clarify why it was on the agenda the way it is.
Well, then, if with that being said, I guess that, if they want to get it, they can afford themselves.
I'm, well, I'm going to make a motion that we, that Lander County provide all county employees and volunteers with the identity guard product for a year at the county's expense.
Do we have a second? Without a second, the motion drops?
No, I had to throw it out there.
Okay, that's alright, very good. So let's, we're going to go ahead and move on. For possible action to create a new policy to be implemented in the Lander County Policy and Procedures in regards to employee emails.
Okay, so currently is what we have is employees' emails are directly related to their names. For example, mine is B Ramos at LanderCountyNV.org, and many other employees are that, that way throughout the county. So if we have an employee that transfers from one office to the other, it creates some problem. When I spoke to the union about this, their, their opinion and their stance is that your name is your domain and that it should go with you. For my offices, I made, when we started this whole thing, like LC Public Works. That way, no matter who my secretary was, it always, that email always stayed there for, for that office. And if they wanted their own email that was related to anything with the county, that they could have it with their name and that would go with them if they ever left. But we have nothing in policy to, to state that right now, and that's what I'm asking for, is if we could put something in policy that when employees do transfer, that, that email address that's linked to their name goes with them. And if the departments would like to have departmental emails, that they can make them departmental emails. But I don't believe that that name should stay with the department beings, it's linked directly to that employee.
Okay, Bird, I'm a little confused, because as Public Works, you were still B Ramos at LanderCountyNV.org. So even though you've changed positions, you still have the same email. It goes with you, so there's only, only a select few really that this would really affect, wouldn't it?
Well, all the office employees currently, and I shouldn't say all, but the majority of the office employees that work for Lander County have it linked to their name, so if they work in the Treasurer's Office or the District Attorney's Office, their, their name is where they're coming to. Say if they transferred from the DA's office to admin, then people would be sending them emails thinking they're reaching out to them in admin, but the DA's office would still be receiving the emails if the email did not move with them.
Okay, that's just, you know, that's just a few of them, because I think probably the DA's office has a separate.
Nope, all of our emails upstairs are all tied to our names.
But is it, is it at?
At LanderCountyNV.org.
So that should go anywhere?
So if, if I leave the DA's office and I were to transfer to admin, my email should go with me. Some departments want to keep, so if their secretary's name is tied, is their email, they are wanting to keep that email in their department even though the employee is transferred.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, that's why we're asking for policy. So is what, is what I'd like to see the policy somewhat relate to is that the employee's email that's directly related to their name transfers with the employee upon the time of transfer, and if the employee leaves the county, that we delete that email from our system entirely. That way, nobody's responding to anybody else's, and it, and it should.
Absolutely. Yeah, I guess I'll make a motion that we create a new policy that an individual's email is attached to them specifically, no matter where they're, what department, office they're working at. I mean, I'm sorry, nobody wants to use my email, I mean, it's like, or, or?
I'll second that motion. I, I feel if, if the department wants to keep it, they should put their own. So it would come in Public Works or it would come in DA, whatever, individually, so somebody can answer that.
So Patty made the motion, and Judy made the motion, Patty seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I just can't imagine trying to keep somebody's name.
Any opposed? Okay.
It's just a good clarification, Judy.
I know, but jeez. Get that work done, alright? So, for possible action to approve or disapprove Resolution 2020 dash zero seven, directing appointment and net proceeds received in the month of June 2020.
Make a motion, we approve the Resolution number two zero two, start over. I will make a motion, we approve Resolution number 2020 dash zero seven of the Board of Lander County Commissioners, a resolution directing appointment of the net proceeds received in the month of June 2020. Whereas on July first, 2020, the Lander County Treasurer received three hundred and six thousand seventy-three dollars and twenty cents in net proceeds. And whereas, it is the desire of the Lander County Board of Commissioners to appropriate the net proceeds as follows. Under mandated, we have commission fees, general fund, three percent in the amount of nine thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty cents going into Fund zero zero one, zero zero zero, three one, three four five. Assessor tech fees, two percent, amount of six thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-six cents into Fund three zero zero dash zero 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 dash three two 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 three. China Springs, in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents into Fund zero zero one, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. State medical indigent, amount of six thousand two hundred ninety-four dollars and five cents into Fund zero zero four, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. State indigent, Naco, amount one thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents into Fund zero zero four, zero zero zero, three one, three four one. Capital acquisition, two thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents into Fund zero three one, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. Landfill, four thousand eight hundred and four dollars and sixty-two cents into Fund zero one one, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. Hospital, forty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents into Fund zero six zero, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. School district, sixty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents into Fund zero seven zero, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. Under discretionary, we have indigent in the amount of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents into Fund zero zero three, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. For a total discretionary of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-one cents, grand total three hundred and six thousand zero seventy-three twenty. Whereas the Lander County Board of Commissioners desires to use discretionary net proceeds to fund the indigent fund zero zero three. Be it further resolved, that the fiscal officer and the treasurer are directed to distribute the payment for net proceeds according to the schedule, passed and adopted this twenty-third day of July, 2020.
Thank you, Judy, I'll second that motion for the resolution.
And I authorize the chair to sign.
So on that for public comment?
Huh?
For public comment? You made the motion, she's second, I was just wondering to see if there was any public comment?
Question. Do we always put the discretionary into indigent?
Muted, unmuted.
Lake and Sullivan for the record, it goes into lots of different places, it's just kind of based on where we need the money at the time. I chose to do the indigent fund because we have some state pass-through mandates that were not put in the budget this year, so I'm putting it in there to give it a better fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Judy made the motion, Patty seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. For possible action to approve, disapprove the donation and placement of a memorial bench for Jim and Carleen Stewart at the Battle Mountain Golf Course and for the county manager to oversee the placement.
My name's James Holland, and I'm the president of the Jim and Carleen Stewart Memorial Fund. We purchased a bench as a group for my grandparents, and we would just like to place it at the golf course, that's one of their loves. They also helped with the golf course when it was coming into town. So we were wondering if we could set the bench there and if Lander County would be able to donate the concrete and the installment of the, the platform that the bench will go on. The people who made the bench will put the bench down.
I think that's great. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the donation and placement of the memorial, memorial bench for Jim and Carleen Stewart at the Mountain View Golf Course and for the county manager to oversee placement as well as provide anything necessary for that placement.
Alright, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion, I do have a question on the backup material though. Was that a picture or something?
I am so sorry, that picture was grainy, the people building the bench. Oh, that's not how I sent it, I don't. The bench does not look like that.
What is it, is it the bench?
Yeah, so it was a picture of what the bench will look like, it's not of the bench, but it is a picture of what it would look like.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's just a little concrete bench and it'll have like a scripture on the seat of it, thank you.
James, can I talk to you after the meeting?
So do we have any public comment? Judy made the motion, Patty seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, very good.
Thank you.
There you go.
You don't mind waiting, do you?
Muted, unmuted.
Just a couple more items.
Alright, going on to number nine, for possible action to approve, disapprove the amendment of the medical marijuana application for lander leaf growers to include the recreation and allow lander leaf growers to pay the application fee to Lander County. Alright, go ahead.
Lander, Lander for lander leaf growers.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just back, somehow our application wasn't applied properly in the beginning, and so I asked for an amendment to amend my application and pay the county the fees to move forward with the recreational license.
So, so we have reviewed the application and they meet all the requirements and they've paid their fees, so I see no problem.
So we have a motion?
I am sorry you had to come back again, Karen, but there wasn't a lot we could do on it. But I will make the motion to approve the amendment of the medical marijuana application for the lander leaf growers, which includes recreation now, and allow lander leaf growers to pay the political fees, they have been paid, I believe. Right, okay, so I'll scratch that.
So do we have?
For recreation, period.
A second? Alright, I'll second. Any public comment?
I, Carolyn, I'm sorry. When this first came before us, and, and I was opposed to it, I understand certain reasonings behind everything. But it was, it was discussed to some, quite extensive, that the, the people of Lander County voted against any type of recreational marijuana in the county. And I voted no against it at that time, so it's nothing personal. I'm just still, I guess, possibly an exception for medical, but then on the other hand, when you turn and want recreational, I am still opposed to that for the citizens of Lander County. I'm sorry for that.
I, I too, not really for recreational use, but the way that the state has set up the system, if you do just medical, it really limits where you can sell that product to. Whereas if you label it recreational, then they can sell it to anyone they want to, including medical people. So it's kind of where my hands were kind of tied. If you want to be in this business, you really have to have both.
And I would, originally, I wasn't on the board when this came in front, and I know that the tax, like sixty-one percent of voters were against this. But since then, I've did a little research, like I do begin around, going around and seeing some of the places that are obvious in town who grow it themselves already, which I, I'm amazed by. And so I'm, at this time, and I make sure I'm right with Robert, with, when this goes in place, then there are no, people are no longer. Then they're no, people are no longer allowed to grow it at home. Correct, are they, are they still allow?
Dispensaries.
You can grow as long as you live twenty-five miles away from a dispensary.
So.
I, I think that the problem we have here, and I understand where you're coming from Commissioner Allen, because you and I both. Were opposed to marijuana in the county, and we were opposed because of what the voter said. However, the county passed it anyway, and it is perfectly legal for it to be sold both ways here. As long as they follow all of the state and county laws, so I don't know how we can prohibit. A business who is following everything, even though we were personally against it. We were outvoted and it is the law, and so I, I don't know how we can deny it.
Art, are you there?
I'm here.
Alright, you want to go ahead, we can barely hear you, so can you kind of try to speak up a little bit, please?
He doesn't know what item we're on.
I'm here.
Okay. We're on number nine, did you have, want to speak on that beha- on behalf of the number nine?
No, I don't have an agenda with me, what is the, what's the item?
It's okay, let me get, hang on.
It's the medical marijuana, Art, and this is Pat, and I made the motion. Um, they, uh, they have applied for their licenses, they have paid all their applicable fees to Lander County. And so the motion is to approve them and amend their application to include recreation.
And I seconded it.
Okay, I, I can vote aye for that, Pat.
Alright, so, any more public comment? All in favor, aye?
Aye, Art Clark votes aye.
Alright, opposed?
I, I'm aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Alright, very good, alright.
Muted, unmuted.
Did it pass?
Yeah, yes it did.
Okay.
Alright, we're going on to.
I'm sorry for any inconvenience, I'm in and out of service.
Alright, alright, we're going on to number ten, so.
Okay.
Alright, for possible action to approve, disapprove the annual agreement between LP Insurance Services LLC. And Lander County, starting July first, twenty twenty, and remaining in effect for thirty-six months. In the amount not to exceed three thousand eighty dollars per month, or thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty annually. Alright, you're on.
Hi, Tim Holland with LP Insurance Services. Um, this is a new one for me because I, I, I sent over the original contract to the former county manager and they. I was informed that it was asked in, in chamber here for a ten percent increase, so I sent over a new contract. And one of the things we did, instead of a one-year contract. We just said, how about we do a three-year contract and you still have the ability to fire me within ninety days. For any misperformance, and so, um, I sent that over and then former county manager. Wanted Bert to, to handle this instead of him, so, that's why I'm here. Would you like a little historical perspective?
Um, actually, yeah, I'll, I'll just put that on the record, that, um. Usually insurance policies are just plain sold and the commission is paid. By the insurance company, so to speak, in, in this type of work, they don't do it that way and, um. Our commission is paid separately to LP Insurance. When Tim took over from our other company, uh, we negotiated a monthly amount that LP got. And that has not been increased in how long, Tim?
Since two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so they are asking for an increase, um, on that, which still, if you compare it to the. Monthly premium that we pay for insurance, which is pretty close to two hundred thousand dollars a month. Um, I think it's more than reasonable, on the three years, that can be negotiated if something comes up or we decide to go a different way, so. Um, if anybody else have any questions, anything else you want to add?
I was gonna kind of just say what you, the, the, the thing behind it was, um, we deal with so many municipalities, if. Lander County would take a fourteen percent increase in their medical, do I deserve a fourteen percent increase in my commission? And the answer is no, and it's interesting you said that because the historical part I was gonna get to. There's the, the broker, when I, the broker was making about forty-six thousand dollars in two thousand sixteen, and we reduced that. By quite a bit, but with the current. Contribution the county makes to the health plan by, with, with the dependent load, the commission would be about a hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. So that would be under a norm, the old, the old method as well.
And this year, if I'm correct, oh, ours didn't go up, ratings didn't go up, correct?
There were rate passes across the board, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual agreement between LP Insurance Services LLC and Lander County. Starting July first, two thousand and twenty, and remaining in effect for thirty-six months in the amount not to exceed three thousand eighty dollars per month.
I'll second.
Alright, do, uh, do we have any public comment? Alright, Patsy made the motion and Judy seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Muted, unmuted.
Alright, Public Works, number eleven. For possible action to accept one of the following bids for Lander County, um, Safe Routes. To Schools Project, PWP dash NO, uh, period, LA dash twenty twenty dash three oh six. The first bid was for Honeywell Construction, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. The second, granite construction for one million three hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-three and twenty-five cents. Alright, you are on, Mr. Prince.
Don Prince, uh, Public Works. Um, this is the Safe Routes to School, Aaron and Bert's been working on this, I'm taking over, uh. I got Aaron Martinez here with AM Engineering to explain this.
Good day commissioners, Aaron Martinez for the record, AM Engineering. And, um, the item in front of you and what's in your packet is, uh, the recommendation for award to award the base bid contract to Honeywell Construction. And, uh, globally, the project is, um, east of Broad Street. As we tackle several of your city blocks to address the ADA, uh, compliance issues that are in that neighborhood. A lot of the existing curb and gutter was trying to be utilized out there so we could save project funds, so if you look at the plans. We tried to allocate the safe routes, if you will, or the ADA accessible routes on one side of the roadway. Uh, is how we chose that, and so we tried to select those roadways based on. Infrastructure in our way and the least amount of impact on the residents, but of course, when you're doing a neighborhood retrofit like this. Uh, these types of projects are very, uh, touchy, and so we go about it in a very unique manner. Under the county manager's direction, we went and knocked on every homeowner's door. We issued them a plan sheet for their exact home, what was to occur there, a huge amount of contact information. And so I feel like we've done our best foot forward to try to, um, make sure the residents were understanding. Of what, uh, was going in front of their property and, and any concerns that they've had, we've got that logged. And so we've addressed any of those so far, so I believe as of right now, we are, uh, at a hundred, we have. Nobody that's sitting out with any concerns at this time. Um, going forward with the contract, the contractor is required through the contract to i- issue. A letter to that homeowner prior to actually starting the construction, we're gonna be hitting it in phases, so we're not gonna come and just rip the whole place up and start. On every end, uh, so we'll be hitting those particular homeowners at that time, so as we get closer to their home, they'll be made fully aware. And then we'll actually start that construction. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
So, I, I still don't understand exactly what you're gonna be doing.
No problem, it's a sidewalk project. So we're putting sidewalk in on those city blocks on one side of the roadway. To perpetuate safe access from Broad Street up to the schools.
Sidewalks?
Okay, so the, you have some homeowners that didn't want to put sidewalks in because they will be.
No, not necessarily, and I apologize for not conveying that properly, essentially, we just wanted to make sure that the homeowners. Understood what's occurring, because a lot of these houses are built into the county right away. So for instance, there's a home that's literally, his front door is five feet into your property. And so as we come through there and trying to navigate the sidewalk project, we're, we've got a, we're, we're really close to these people's private investment. And so we wanted to make sure that they understood the co- the sidewalk project and what that entailed and how that affected their particular frontage.
So they will be responsible for clearing the snow and things like that?
As always, tho- those homeowners are typically required to maintain their own frontages. Um, and whether they do or not, I'm not sure.
Does that increase their taxes? Having a sidewalk, is that like putting up a fence?
Technically, majority of the improvements occurring in this situation here are occurring in county right-of-way, so those are not private improvements. So to answer your question, not necessarily though, because we are entering into private property in particular locations in order to make our tie-in infrastructure. Nice with theirs, so for instance, if you have a staircase that enters into that street right now. We're coming and putting in a sidewalk and then we're gonna have to redo your staircase in order to allow you the sufficient access that you had prior to our project.
Okay, but if my, if my front door opens to. A couple steps and then nothing, my lawn, and you come along and put a sidewalk in in front of me here. We're not connecting at all, so we're fine, it's just a sidewalk out on the county right-of-way, right?
Certainly agree, but we are connecting their infrastructure to make sure that we.
I, I just, I wasn't sure if you were including something else along with it for the homeowner, that's all.
Nope, sidewalk and driveway access.
Okay, thank you.
I'll approve, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the offer on the following bid for the Lander County Safe Routes to School Project, PWP. Uh, point NO, point LA, dash twenty twenty, three oh six, for Honeywell Construction, eight hundred sixty-five thousand, eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Alright, so we have Judy making the motion, Patsy seconded, do we have any public comment?
We lost Art again, and he said if we needed him to vote, to call him back.
Alright, alright, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Alright, very good.
Muted, unmuted.
Alright, uh, correspondence, we, for its future agenda items. So, um, a future agenda item I'd like to see is backup system for our, for our county. To start working on that. Also, with that being said, um. How to figure out who the administrator that, because in the policies that we spoke about earlier, make sure that I'm not wrong in quoting this. That it is, um, the county's right to have access to emails that belong to the, so it's, that belong to the county. So, how, how do we figure out who exactly is going to have access to those emails?
So, the county does have access, um, currently it is just two people, Brian, who is our computer tech and Laura.
Okay.
Who is, who is over him, however. It's not free and un, unaccounted access, when, when we start talking about emails, I, I went back and did some research on the NRS. And, uh, NRS six thirteen point one three five, I can give a copy to anybody who would like it. Um, and it refers to a bunch of different things, but mainly it's, and it goes into another NRS such as ninety point three hundred. And it relates back to the Security Forum Act, so more or less, we can't access somebody's email unless it is a security threat. Or there is the, or is, there's the view of a security threat, um. And that includes county emails as well, that is not clarified in our policies and procedures. Um, howe- however, now it's, we, we have this here and we'll probably be back before you to ratify the. Earlier motion that was made on putting policy in place.
And can that be added to that?
And, and we'll probably try to relate back to that, to make sure that in our policies and procedures that we aren't going against any NRS.
Okay, very good.
It's, uh, six one three point one three five.
At the last meeting on July ninth, we had before us the, um, um. Two thousand and twenty private activity bond cap that we voted on to give to Nevada Rural Housing. That included a resolution that we did not have properly agendized, and that does have to come before us.
Okay, I apologize.
Okay. Okay? That'll be fine, and I also have a question on the water and sewer in, um, Austin. Because we did the approval of a job description for a part-time person, and we were unable to fill that. And I'm wondering whether, um, we had talked about maybe doing something a little different, maybe a half-tech, half. Receptionist or something like that, if that's true, if we can actually fill that position somewhere a little differently. We need to do a new job description and get that before us.
Yes, that, that will be back before you because, um, due to some requirements of the state that I wasn't aware of at the time. We have a few things we gotta bring back before you guys to, to get cleared up for that up there.
And a quick comment on the correspondence?
Um, for those of you, um, that may not have noticed, or, um, those that, uh. Uh, don't have access, I did want you to know that, um, Charlie Bond, the Baptist. Preacher in Austin, actually wrote a letter to the commission, Lander County Commission. And to Sheriff Ron Unger, uh, expressing his support. For the department, the sheriff's department and all of the officers, very nice letter, thank you.
Alright, any fir- anything else further for agendas, alright, so do we have any, uh, further public comment? A motion to adjourn? A second?
Second.
Judy, all, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, very good.
This conference is no longer being recorded.